I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We are going to call to order our town council meeting for tonight, January 12th, 2015, our first meeting of the new year, 7:00 PM, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemens.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Pellican.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Excused.
And Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Eight here.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, December 15, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? Okay. A simple hand vote would be fine for that then, all those in favor. Thank you. Agenda item number three, subcommittee reports, and tonight, A is general government. Counselor Clemens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A general government subcommittee meeting was held on Wednesday, January 7th, 2015, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Conrad Vandal, Gus Counselor Steves, Counselor Sean Moriarty, citizens members Holly Cristo, Mike Janes, acting town manager Kevin Pecos, and citizen Maureen Doyle. Counselor Pellican was excused. We had two agenda items that evening, both were appointments. The first one was to recommend the appointment of Reverend Peter Preppel to the Conservation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council for confirmation. Counselor Vandal made the motion, and it was seconded by Mike Janes. Citizens member Cristo asked if there were only two candidates that applied. Mr. Pecos said they were actually three, and he picked the two people he felt were most qualified. He went on to say that the applicants not appointed may become associate members, they can attend meetings and can vote, and can't vote, but if there is an opening later on, then they can be rewarded with an appointment. Mr. Pecos said he interviews every applicant in the decision to appoint them as the town managers. He went on to say the third person is interested in another committee. I asked if both candidates understood the time constraints involved with the Conservation Commission, and I also mentioned that it could be quite difficult, quite involved sometimes with site visits and such. Mr. Pecos said that the applicants were well aware of what was required of them. Ms. Doyle said that being a member of the Conservation Commission, she knows firsthand how hard it is to meet quorum because there are a lot of commitments, and it's hard to get people to do everything. There are currently five members, and there are supposed to be seven, so there is room for more members if you're interested in the Conservation Committee. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, four zero. The motion passed. The second agenda item was vote to recommend the appointment of Michelle Reese to the Conservation Commission for a three-year effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council. Motion was made by Holly Cristo and seconded by Mike Janes, and since we had had so much discussion on the previous item, there was no further discussion. Show of hands, all in favor, four zero, and the motion passed. Motion to adjourn by Mike Janes, seconded by Holly Cristo, and we adjourn the meeting at 6:45 PM, respectfully submitted by Justine French, our recording clerk. We just had a meeting this evening at six o'clock, so there'll be minutes for that at the next meeting, otherwise nothing is scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. B, DPW, and I'll just read those real quick. A meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Wednesday, January 7th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room here at Town Hall. In attendance were Chairman Conrad Vandal, Counselors Clemens, Steves, and Moriarty, citizen members Mark Moore and Roger Calwet, acting manager Kevin Pecos, DPW Director Heather Blakely, and citizen Estelle Calwet. Counselor Estrada was excused. Chairman Vandal called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Agenda item number one, review and vote to approve snow plow and ice control operation agreements for DPW plowing and removal bids for 2014-2015 season, and submit to council for ratification. Motion was made by Counselor Clemens and seconded by citizen member Moore. Mr. Pecos said that this was an annual bid, people bid and then file insurance certificates. Counselor Steves asked when the private plow drivers were called out. Ms. Blakely said it was determined by storm, somewhere in the vicinity of three inches. It has to be a plowable amount of snow. Mr. Pecos said that if there isn't a plowable amount of snow, the Salters and Sanders are still called out, they prep the road surface for the plows. Ms. Blakely said that they usually send out the Salters and Sanders before it starts snowing, as it takes three hours to get through the town spreading route. If they had to wait until it started snowing, they would be way behind schedule. Counselor Steves asked if it would be possible for DPW to do all of the plowing, and Ms. Blakely said not during a major event. She did say the temporary plow drivers were called in before the private plow drivers, and that the temporary ones use town trucks. Citizen member Calwet asked if they could cut back on the use of sand. Ms. Blakely said they usually don't use sand unless it's a major ice event. Mr. Pecos said that they are currently looking into new chemicals, that some chemical applications now make it possible to not use any sand at all, and that they are expensive and you need distribution equipment, too. Mr. Calwet asked if the chemicals were environmentally friendly, and Mr. Pecos said probably not. Ms. Blakely said that even the sand that seeps into the streams with the catch basins is also not environmentally friendly. She went on to say it's all about application rate and finding the right location and calibration is a big part of it as well. It's knowing what to use, and on a night where it goes below 20 degrees, regular salt is not going to work, you need to use treated salt. Counselor Steves asked if there was a priority when calling out the private plowers. Ms. Blakely said everyone gets called, everyone has an assigned route, and they are usually assigned with a driver from town. Counselor Steves asked when the larger equipment is called out, like the grader and the dozers, and Ms. Blakely said that that was more for snow removal, that the graders used more for cleaning intersections. She explained the prices listed for the plow drivers are based on state bid prices, that the local plowers do not get a gas allowance whereas the state drivers do. Vote by show of hands with a favorable recommendation to council for ratification, all in favor, four to zero, motion passes. Motion was made by Counselor Clemens and seconded by citizen member Moore to adjourn. Chairman Vandal adjourned the meeting at 7:15 PM, and that is respectfully submitted by Justine French, the recording clerk. At this moment, I do not know of a DPW meeting scheduled. So move on to C, Education and Human Services. Counselor Pellican.
No report and no meeting scheduled, thanks.
Thank you. D, Planning and Development. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. A meeting of the Planning and Development Subcommittee was held on Tuesday, January 5th, 2015, in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Subcommittee members Counselor Steves, Counselor Estrada, and citizen members Evelyn Petrelli and Wallace McKenzie. Also in attendance were Town Manager Pecos, Rose Canoye, Roger, and Estelle Calwet. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Agenda item number one, discuss proposed mission of the Southbridge Master Implementation Committee and submit to council for ratification. Ms. Canoye reviewed the implementation plan the committee will be working on. These items can be changed and/or added or to or deleted. One of the committee duties is to discuss when funding is needed and make suggestions on where the funding can be sought. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to approve the proposed mission of the Southbridge Master Plan Implementation Committee. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda item number two, vote to recommend the appointment of Wallace McKenzie to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council for ratification. Counselor Steves asked that since the Master Plan Implementation is a five-year program, shouldn't the committee members have a five-year term? Mr. Pecos said the term could be three years, five years, or anything the council wants it to be. I said the applicants signed up for three years, and we should not make any changes to the terms without the knowledge of the other applicants. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Wallace McKenzie to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by show of hands, four in favor, one abstained, Mr. McKenzie. Agenda item number three, vote to recommend the appointment of Kristen O'Clair to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council for ratification. There was no discussion on this because we did have much discussion on agenda item number two. A motion was made by Counselor Estrada and seconded by Counselor Steves with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Kristen O'Clair to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda item number four, vote to recommend the appointment of Al Lonnie to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and to submit to council for ratification. No further discussion was held. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Evelyn Petrelli with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Al Lonnie to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. Agenda item number five, vote to recommend the appointment of Cynthia Neal to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018, and submit to council for confirmation. No further discussion was held. A motion was made by Counselor Steves and seconded by Counselor Estrada with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Cynthia Neal to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Evelyn Petrelli and seconded by Counselor Estrada, vote by show of hands, all in favor, five to zero. I adjourned the meeting at 6:27 PM, respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. And that's it for the minutes, and I have no pleadings, meetings planned. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protection of Persons and Property. Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a meeting on Monday, January 5th, here in the George Parent Conference Room. In attendance were myself, Counselor Moriarty, Counselor Manah, citizen members Jack Jovan and Gary Forcer. Also in attendance were Counselor Steves, town manager Kevin Pecos, fire chief Mark DeFranzo, police chief Sherrett, Roger, and Estelle Calwet. I don't think they were there for that meeting. Were they? Okay. My mind is... And Counselor Vecchia was excused. I called the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Agenda item number one, to vote to recommend the appointment of Shane Woodson as permanent deputy chief to the Southbridge Police Department, effective immediately, and submit to council for confirmation. Mr. Pecos said the assessment center came in and the testing has been done. There were four candidates, the testing results were reported in ranking order. Shane Woodson was the highest ranking. A motion was made by Counselor Manah and seconded by Gary Forcer with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Shane Woodson as permanent deputy chief to the Southbridge Police Department effective immediately. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five zero. Agenda item number two, vote to recommend the appointment of Jose Dinghy as permanent lieutenant to the Southbridge Police Department, effective immediately, and to submit to council for confirmation. As previously discussed, this appointment was to be made permanent after the deputy chief was made permanent. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Manah with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint Jose Dinghy as permanent lieutenant to the Southbridge Police Department effective immediately. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor. Note, Counselor Carrasco asked if we could reach out to the police union so they can give us their opinion on the assessment center testing. Agenda item number three was vote to approve the appointment of the following three individuals to the Southbridge Auxiliary Fire for one-year term to expire June 30th, 2016, and to submit to council for ratification. Corey Lemon from Charlton, Mass., Mark Jones Maynard from Southbridge, Mass., and Darren Dodge of Southbridge. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Gary Forcer to approve the appointments as stated in the agenda. Chief DeFranzo said Corey checks were done, all on all candidates, and nothing prohibiting the appointment was discovered. These positions are probationary until June 30th, 2016. Excuse me. An amendment to the previous motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Manah to drop the one-year term wording. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five zero. A motion was made by Jack Jovan and seconded by Counselor Manah to approve the appointment of the following three candidates to the Southbridge Auxiliary Fire to expire June 30th, 2016. Corey Lemon of Charlton, Mark Jones Maynard of Southbridge, and Darren Dodge of Southbridge, Mass. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five zero. A motion to adjourn was made by Counselor Manah and seconded by Gary Forcer. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, five zero. Meeting was adjourned at 6:27 PM, respectfully submitted Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. I have no other meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Agenda item, rather subsection F, Town Manager's Search Committee. Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to give the public an update. We have reached out, and on Friday was the deadline for proposals to be submitted by search firms, and we have received four proposals from four different search firms, and we have a meeting scheduled this Thursday at 4:00 PM in the George Parent Conference Room to re-interview different search firms to continue, to restart the process in the town manager search.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number five, chairman's announcements. I have just a couple of quick ones. Though the actual location is yet to be set, I'm still trying to get, work that out, but most likely here. The Town Council and School Committee will have a joint meeting on January 29th, which is a Thursday, and that will be for 7:00 PM. Again, just as a reminder, especially now that we're actually getting some winter weather that is part of the town's bylaws and regulations, make sure you clear off your sidewalks, in particular by the crosswalks and walkways. And just while we're on that topic, through the manager, more or less, I know we're going through some different plans in terms of the handling of snowstorms and such, but, and I'm sure that the police department has already passed it along, but I know there were several spots in town, just even tonight, that were very, very slippery. And for anybody who's watching this, if you're going out at any point this evening, please be careful, especially if you're on a slope. I know coming down Dennison, about halfway up where Harwood Farm Road is, there was a cruiser there, and I know that because even though I had gotten the heads up that the road was in pretty rough shape, and I was only going down 5, 10 miles an hour, I still almost went sideways into that, so. The roads are pretty rough out there, so just if we can, obviously we're making adjustments with those. And just lastly, this is the fourth year that we're doing this, and this is just a quick plug, not so much a chairman announcement, but there will be the Chili Cook Off and Minute to Win at Trivia Night on Saturday, January 24th, at the Polish Club on, again, the 24th. Chili Cook Off part starts at 5:00, the game night at 7:00. All the benefit, the Relay for Life, the American Cancer Society. Moving on to agenda item number six, Town Managers' Announcements. Mr. Pecos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. One item, the AARP, which I believe stands for American Association of Retired Persons, I don't know if I'm a member, will be offering tax assistance to low to moderate income wage earners in the community starting February 2nd. People who are interested in taking advantage of that tax assistance can call the library. The staff over there knows all about it, has all the criteria, and can set up an appointment with the experts from AARP. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentations. We have two tonight, the first of which is by Jim Sotilly from the Marine Corps League and their Toys for Tots program.
Chairman, my name is James Sotilly, Pine Dale Street, in Southbridge. I'm also the commandant of the Marine Corps League Detachment headquartered here in Southbridge. Our responsibility this year for our Toys for Tots campaign was successful, not in... We want to express our gratitude to the town manager, to the town council chairman for obtaining space for us to conduct our campaign this year at the high school in Southbridge. We were able to obtain almost 10,000 toys, donations of close to $12,000. We serviced 4,000, a little over 4,000 children, and 70% of that was here in Southbridge. Every child from the Brookfields to Webster, and from Spencer to Southbridge, received approximately four toys. It was a successful campaign, and again, in no short, or without the effort of the town manager, and the town council chairman, and the police and fire department here in Southbridge, we would like to present to those folks the certificates of appreciation for their efforts on our behalf. We, our volunteers expended 2,600 miles with vehicles, and had over 3,000 hours, or 3,010 man-hours of volunteer work. But as, again, without your help, we would not have had a successful campaign this year. So in light of that, I'd like to present to the town manager a certificate of appreciation for his effort, Captain, if you would, the... Or is it major? I'm sorry.
City sergeant, I'll be mayor all day.
The Marine Corps League Certificate of Appreciation to Kevin E. Pecos, town manager of Southbridge, awarded this 22nd day of December, 2014. Thank you very much for your effort, and believe it or not, we really appreciate what you've done.
Thank you.
The next certificate I'd like to present would be to the, for the town employees here in the building. They supplied a tremendous amount of toys for us, but the real effort, it seemed to me, there was a contest between the fire department and the police department to bury us in toys, and they were almost successful in that. So I'd like to make a presentation to the fire department appreciation, if they have a representative here, and the police department. Chief, Marine Corps League, would like to award you folks a certificate of appreciation for your efforts during our campaign for Toys for Tots.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Chief, fire department, between you and Lieutenant Dinghy, we got buried in toys. We would like to present the certificate of appreciation to the police department and your crew for doing all the work for us. Thank you very much. Again, we express our thanks, and for next year, we'll be back to conduct our program again. And to the vice chairman, we want to thank his effort for coming up and assisting us during one day in our campaign. Semper Fidelis.
Before you go, Mr. Sotilly, too, I just want to, I don't know if anybody else will have any comments, but I wanted to thank you for the work that you have done, and all of the members of the Marine Corps League, and while we have several members of the police department here, and thinking about it as well, it was, it caught some of the local news in the Boston stations and such, and, you know, there was, I just wanted to thank you, as well as Counselor Carrasco, a number of the police officers in the back who were able to make it. I know there were others who wanted to be able to make it but were unable to, in helping out several kids that are going through rough times, so I just wanted to thank you for that and give you kudos. Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, Mrs. Sotilly, I just also want to thank you in the Marine Corps, being able to go down there and see the operation in full swing. Kudos to you guys, and you guys did an excellent job organizing, delivering, manning that line that was outrageous, and you guys kept it together, you did an awesome job, and kudos to you guys. Thank you for serving our community.
It looked like a movie line there for a while.
Oh, absolutely, and thank you for serving, because there was, I could tell you, I know of several families that were benefactors of your program, and the smiles on their, those children, was priceless. Thank you.
Mr. Pecos? Go ahead.
Just, I think the festivity here, observers wouldn't be complete without one other very important thank you. I'm not sure how well it's known by the community, but a lot of the toys that were brought in, I think Jim knows, were brought in the night of the big old Turkey Bowl, a night which will live forever in my life, in my heart. And that was the, yeah, very funny, I know, I dropped the ball. And that, of course, was the creation, the brainstorm and the creation after a lot of hard work of the chairman, Counselor Moriarty. And I think we all need to say thank you to him for, on a serious note, for visioning this thing and bringing those two communities together, and having the community bring all those toys together, and giving us all a really wonderful night, and that really was, was, he created that, and that's a heck of a thing. I don't know that people knew that.
He united us all.
Yes, he did.
Bring that up on a night where I'm wearing Bartlett green, which is not really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, B, Boards and Committees for the Library Trustees from Jacob Edwards Library, Chairman of the Trustees, Richard Whitney.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm really excited to represent the trustees, and while I wake up my computer, I promise this will be a brief presentation, but hopefully everyone will learn a little something about the trustees, which is my main focus. I think everyone knows what a gem the library is, and we're celebrating our 100th anniversary starting last year, but through May, and it's going to culminate with a book that I thought was going to be published before now, but it will be published probably April, May, and really give you a better feel for the library. So tonight, I'm talking about the trustees, the governing board of the library, and if I can see, to start the slideshow, let me tell you a little bit about the Board of Trustees. I've been on the board since 2004, I have to believe, and hopefully, I don't know how well that can be seen, but in any case, that's a picture taken last May that shows many of the trustees. Paula Decolis unfortunately has since deceased and is sorely missed, but that was at our kickoff of the 100th anniversary, which we're continuing to celebrate, and I want to say that the Board of Trustees is made up of seven members, and this is very unique to Southbridge. I sat in a meeting of trustees from around the state. Nobody's quite like us, and it's because, well, we have four bank-appointed trustees and three from the town. And that, why do we have that? That goes way back to the 1940s, I believe. Grace Edwards, one of the benefactors at that time, stipulated, and I think I'll just read this, "It is my desire, this is in her will, that the trustees under the paragraph of my will shall have the power to appoint four trustees of the Jacob Edwards Library, and in the event that the town of Southbridge increases the number of trustees, the trustees shall at all times have the power to appoint a majority." So it was clear back then that for this, the trustees would be appointed four by the town, four by the bank, and three by the town. And that's very unusual. Now, I will say, I'm a town-appointed trustee, and while we did have a period of time 10 years ago where there was some discord, there isn't now. We have a great cooperation between the library and the town and the trustees, and really, it's academic whether you're town-appointed or bank-appointed on, you know, we have to think, what are we? So we represent the library. So I just wanted to say that. But it's an unusual makeup, and it's four to three. Our present makeup is, I took over as chair, I think it was last year. Robin Weber is our vice chair. Gary Bridgman has been long-serving, he's a lawyer, Mary Ellen Blake, and James Dyer. That means we have right now two vacancies, and I'll get into more about that, but I strongly urge that we're looking for representation on the board, as I know other boards are, but I'll go into that more. But we have meetings on, once a month, it's usually on a third Tuesday at noon, for about an hour and a half, an hour, and that is one of the, one of the requirements is that you attend the meetings. One thing I will say is, what are the responsibilities of the trustees? Well, a big responsibility is fiscal oversight. All spending that's done is overseen... All spending that's done is overseen by, doesn't mean we always control it entirely, and I'll explain that in a minute, but we oversee, is it prudent? Is your spending prudent? You know, because we are overseeing that. It's administered, the actual spending is administered through the library. Margaret Morrissey, the library director, will obviously direct a lot of what we want or what the town administers and through the town accountant and the town, we have a great relationship and that's administered, but we authorize spending. We also oversee policy, computer usage, you know, whatever it is. And sometimes it's, can be controversial, like when I first started, we had an event that was somewhat controversial and we're proud that we sponsored it. It was a gay event, gay pride event. So we will oversee policy. Then we'll plan for the future. For example, the expansion of the library before I was involved, but the last huge expansion was done around 2000. And that was directed through the Library Board of Trustees, as is many of the events we have now for the 100th, the book that's being sponsored by the trustees. So it's really a great group. I think we've done a lot. One thing I think you will be interested in is, I think there's the impression that we oversee millions of dollars. Well, we are in a good position compared to many libraries, but we, I show there a pie chart of our expenditures, 44% of the funds which started with the Edwards' wills with $100,000 at the time, we cannot touch. So 44% of our funds are untouchable, which maybe is good because we do get interest off that, but we can't touch and never will be able to touch that. Then another, 30% is restricted to specific use, depending upon how it was given to us. So there's 25% of the funds that we have that we have a say in how it's spent, true say. So just so you know, that's why we're looking at our funds and we're in a good position, the library's in a good position, but it's not, it's not what some people think. So that's, I wanted to, I think you understand spending and library spending. So I want to wrap this up. We have two vacancies now on the library board and it really becomes difficult when you're at two vacancies and if there's another one, you know how it goes, can't always hold meetings. So we're looking for people to apply. The stipulation is, do you use the library? Are you interested in the library? Do you, would you like to serve the community, hopefully, you know, a Southbridge resident? And you have interest in the library's governing system? Really, that's it. Can you make meetings and are you interested? And that's fundamentally it. So we have two openings and I encourage people in the audience or anyone that knows somebody that might be interested, please apply. How do you apply? Well, you can go on the town website and there's a link there, but we'll also, you know, on the, via the town website or the applications at the town or at the library. And it's a quick form that you would fill out and then the trustees would oversee, you know, if there, hopefully will be a number of candidates that do apply and we would select, really whether it's a town appointment or not. In recent years, it's been the library oversees and recommends if it's a town appointment to the town manager. So with that, I'd just like to end it. We had an event in November and I think it was fantastic as we had, you'll see if you go on the website and on Facebook, Margaret does a great job of posting pictures, but those are many past directors and trustees and so forth. We had an appreciation, thank you. And a lot of this will be in the book. That's one reason we postponed the book publication. We'll have an ebook publication and a hard copy, April or May, so I'm really excited. And the mission statement I end with, but really, please, if you're interested or know of someone, we're really looking for people to join the trustees. So the picture on the left is a picture before our library and I just say, can you imagine the town without our vibrant library? And the staff that Margaret oversees, it's a wonderful staff. And so that's kind of where we are. I'm not sure if there are any questions, but I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments?
I just wanted to at least thank you for coming up and I know I've said this to Margaret when she's been up in the past, but for me anyways, the library is easily my favorite of the town departments that we have. The things that are there, I don't think the average resident may be aware of just how much is there, how many materials are there, how many resources are there. The wealth of resources and information is amazing, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, citizens forum. If there are any residents that would like to come forward to speak on anything that is not on tonight's agenda, please do so now. Just state your name and address when you approach, please.
Good evening, Council, Town Manager, Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I haven't attended a few meetings, but I do stay, I do watch meetings and there is still a few subjects that are, I think, bear to be mentioned. I'm glad to hear of the petition going around to gain some control on trying to reduce the budget. In the past, I came before this council back and I believe it was about 2010 and talked about the fact that, you know, taxes every year were going up and it wasn't, we recognized the recession by the year 2008, 2010. We really, it's a strange situation that we don't seem to be able to show that the lower people are having more of a struggle for a couple of years. But at that point there, I said, you know, I wasn't asking to see a budget cut. I wasn't, all I was asking to see is, could you, could you just hold it? Hold it and not make a raise. I've still watched the past couple of years and the taxes gone up. I remember a former council making the off the comment, taxes go up, get used to it and move on to the next subject. I think we're at a point where I realize, nobody likes to be dragged down by those fixed income people at the bottom. And we always talk about how, well, we're only raising the taxes a little bit, those fixed income people are going to hurt a little bit, but, and it would be great to not think that, you know, we bring everybody up at the same time. I don't want to get into a whole discussion about inequalities, you know, but it continues to happen. And the 1% reduction is a great stat. I too came up before this council because I saw the two seasons of finances. There was a season in July that, no, no, we don't adjust anything now. Then came the season in December, no, no, we're just, and I'm glad the council has finally came to the realization to try to reach in there and grab the madness at some point. We can't do anything about 2015 because it's already gone by somehow. Let's at least grab 2016. And I realize that Mr. Pecos mentioned, and you could hear in the tone of his voice, he says, "I'm going to present you with a budget, one that you want to see." And you could tell that there's going to be pain in that budget. There's going to be people that, you know, maybe are having to look for another job because the only way we're going to achieve any cut at all seems to be, oh, we're going to have to, tightening the belts of everybody is not usually the case. It's eliminate the belt of somebody, eliminate the belt of this. At one of the meetings, I was surprised by one, the finance department came before you and said, "We want to upgrade our secretarial to an accountant so she could sign warrants," which seems like a pretty reasonable request. It allows the ability that, there's only three people, as far as I know, in that department, all three people would be able to at least sign warrants, which warrants is a simple name for checks. And I understand the council saying, no, no, we want to tighten belts, we want, we're going to hold off on this. However, earlier at the same meeting, Mr. Pelletier of the Board of Health announced that we hired a trash cop. And I know the Board of Health lost its recycling coordinator and maybe, I don't know the details, it's personnel issues, but I don't recall any meeting through anything, I attend a lot of Board of Health meetings, I would imagine it would have to go through EHS or general government and come before this council to say, "We're adding the position of trash If we, if we do now have a trash cop, you look through the bylaws, you have mandatory recycling. There's no rules and regulations, which means if he walks up to a trash bag and he finds a piece of paper, well, that's a violation of mandatory recycling. However, we also have banned waste items up at the landfill and their policy is if a truck pulls up and they have a banned waste item, like a tire, all right, you have a list. If the truck has one tire in it, it's all right, let them dump. If the truck has two tires, it's a violation, send them away.
Mr. Buxton? You've hit your five unless you want to ask for an additional two.
Did I ask for additional three minutes?
Some more.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, go ahead.
So we have this trash cop and the mandatory recycling, let me take a high point, high edge intellectual point right now. Recycling is a fundamental law of physics, all right? It's as if we had a mandatory gravity or a mandatory thermodynamics or a mandatory electrical theory. Recycling happens whether you want it to or not. Eventually, this planet started as a rock floating through space and someday it will end up as a rock floating through space. That's recycling. So to even have a bylaw, so basically, the mandatory recycling bylaw is going to have to all be written. We're going to have to come up with some standard. We are very upset that citizens only do 24%. Well, we don't like 24%, but if somebody's going to open up a trash bag, they would have to at least show that more than 24%? Or should we say 12%? Could they, I'm not sure of how you're going to work that out. And there's also the situation that if you look in Appendix H, which is a scope of service for curbside pickup, it's, it's the carrier who decides whether to refuse a load or not. At that point, he labels it and further actions by the Board of Health would be if there's a, if there's a, they announce that they don't pick it up. If the Board of Health goes back and checks it and says, yes, we think you should pick it up, which I don't think is going to be, they're not going, they never were too picky to begin with as far as the carriers. It was only when a former counselor got real upset with the trash cans on West Street.
Yep, Mr. Pusman, you've hit the two minutes there.
All right. My last point is, I don't mean, I don't see, I don't think I know anything about the retirement plan, but you have to understand when a citizen hears that our retirement plan is $59 million, even more than our annual budget behind schedule, it's got to be scary because the city of Detroit was taken down not by Japan, not by Japanese car manufacturers, it was taken down by municipal retirement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents who'd like to come forward to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, move on to agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Shane Woodson as permanent deputy chief to the Southbridge Police Department effective immediately.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments or discussion? Turn it over to the chief, so we have something.
Thank you, Council. I'm honored to put Shane Woodson forward for the position of deputy chief. He's a young man who spent virtually his entire professional career preparing for this, working for the community of Southbridge and without question, he will do a magnificent job for us.
Okay, seeing no other questions, comments, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marjorie?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Congratulations. Agenda item number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Jose Dinghy to permanent lieutenant to the Southbridge Police Department effective immediately.
Some more. Second.
Any questions, comments or discussion? Chief?
Again, Council, I'm just so fortunate to work with two men like this who have just dedicated themselves to the community. We all know all of the good work that gets done and I wanted to say for both of the families, for all the nights and weekends and holidays that dads aren't there and the rest, these two men are integral in making this community work. I want to thank the council for their consideration for all of this. It's, it's just a fantastic, positive thing for the community tonight. And I want to especially thank Mr. Pecos for coming in. I know it's hard to come in, you've got 600 odd employees and a lot of things going on and you are instrumental in helping, helping us work through the process and we are forever grateful. Thank you very much, Council.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marjorie?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Congratulations. Moving on to agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of Corey Lemon of Charlton as auxiliary call firefighter for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2016.
Some more. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? Chief, just to kind of give an overview, please.
Thank you. I apologize, it was oversight by me. Those three candidates are not available this evening. Two of them are attending a recruit training program, so I hope that they're home studying because it's going to be a very difficult program. So I suspect that they're home studying hard to become call firefighters for our department. I do have to say that they're very excited to be candidates for our department. Two of them, one of them is an EMT, one of them is taking the exam. So again, it's another exciting opportunity for us to put more EMTs in our call department to help us do more ambulance work if the need arises. So they're very excited to be here, so thank you for the opportunity to give them the chance to be an auxiliary firefighter for our department.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other questions, comments, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marjorie?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item number 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Mark Jones Maynard of Southbridge as auxiliary call firefighter for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2016.
Some more. Second.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Clemmons?
Didn't they, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have cut this on the first one, but did you not amend the, to be three-year terms?
No, to be...
To drop the wording of one year?
It was to drop the wording of one-year term, but not to make it a three-year term.
Okay.
Because it's roughly about eighteen.
But then we didn't drop the wording of one year. So I think we need to readdress that here and get it right.
I would suggest we can make, take a friendly amendment on this one, we can go back to the next one after voting on this one.
Right.
As I recall from the meeting, it actually isn't a three-year term, it's actually like a one and a half year term?
Right, that's what, yeah, that's what I thought.
Right, but the amendment made in the minutes was to drop the one year, so it should be read as not with a one year. So I would like to make a motion to amend Agenda Item Number 12 to read, to eliminate the term for a one-year term and continue on from there. And that way, if you read Agenda Item 13?
Right.
Then we won't have to, okay. That's my amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Just to make it clear, it would just read at this point, vote to confirm the appointment of Mark Jones Maynard of Southbridge as auxiliary call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2016. So roll call, please, on the amendment.
Hey, Counsel Marjorie?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the motion itself, the main motion? Okay, seeing none, then roll call, please.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. So, I would entertain a motion at this point to revise the...
To reconsider item number 11, sorry.
To reconsider item number 11? Yes, some more.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion to reconsider? Okay, roll call, please.
Can I just confirm, are we reconsidering number 11?
Just number 11.
Okay.
Number 11.
Okay, Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion to amend number 11 to remove the term for, the wording for a one-year term.
Second. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. I'll give you a breather. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Darren Dodge of Southbridge as auxiliary call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2016.
Mr. Chairman, should we not have voted, revoted on the amended version of number 11?
I'm sorry, you are correct.
Sorry to be that way, but we have to actually do it now.
We haven't reconsidered in a while, so now to actually go through that. So, roll call, please.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Okay, so we finally dispense with number 11. We move on to number 13. Vote to confirm the appointment of Darren Dodge of Southbridge as auxiliary call firefighter effective immediately through June 30, 2016.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, one more roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Reverend Peter Preble to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Michelle Reese to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Questions, comments, or discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Sixteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Wallace McKenzie to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Kristen O'Clair to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eighteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Alani to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda Item Number Nineteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Cynthia Neal to the Master Plan Implementation Committee for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2018.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Here, yes, sorry.
Eight yes?
Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Vote to approve the, vote to approve the proposed mission state, mission of the, I'll start over. Agenda Item Number Twenty. Vote to approve the proposed mission of the Southbridge Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Some more.
Second. Just quickly, even though we are flying through, just to slow us down for fun, I'll read this off so that the general public is aware as to what that mission would be. The Southbridge Master Plan Implementation Committee will promote the master plan that was approved in 2014 and make suggestions for strategies, actions, priorities, and timing to the various leads and partners listed in the implementation plan tables. This will keep the master plan goals and strategies in the forefront and encourage the town's administration and citizens to continue to move the plan forward. The committee will consist of a minimum of seven members and a maximum of 11. To fulfill this mission, the committee will undertake a variety of activities, but not limited to, or rather, including but not limited to, review the master plan and its implementation tables, discuss the six main goals and their importance to the community, and those goals are promote health, safety, and wellness, promote education for all, improve housing in neighborhoods, increase economic development townwide, and improve the downtown, ensure environmental sustainability, and increase community pride. During the sixteen, discuss the 16 top recommendations in the plan, discuss the strategies, actions, funding, and suggestions for leaders and partners listed in the implementation tables, evaluate priorities, establish a recommended timing, contact key leaders and partners for the prioritized strategies and actions to encourage them to discuss and move forward, offer help and make suggestions, continue to coach and suggest as the plan moves forward, and finally, to make suggestions for a five-year update. And just as a note, there are still vacancies within this committee, and anyone and everyone who might be interested in helping move this forward is encouraged to come to the town manager's office and express your interest. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Everybody's very talkative tonight. Roll call, please.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion carries, thank you. Agenda Item Number Twenty-One. Vote to ratify the snow plow and ice control operation agreements per DPW plowing and removal bids for the 2014-2015 season. For snow plowing, Norman Broder, Jeffrey Brusso, Paul Simega, Leonard Corvut, Deanna Hazard, John DeRose, Phil Langto of Hemlock Landscaping, Donald LaRoche, oh, no, I'm sorry, I thought I was going to say LaRoche, getting ahead of myself. Donald LaRoche, Christopher Malinowski, Christopher Parent of Parent Landscaping. For temporary plowing drivers with town vehicles, it would be, is this Maurice?
Maurice.
It's supposed to be Maurice, I imagine, typo? Maurice Capistran, David Shepherd, James Cummings Jr., Kyle Tebow. Snow removal, backup plowing, snow removal equipment would be Jeffrey Brusso, Richard LaFlesh, Philip Langto of Hemlock Landscaping, Christopher Parent of Parent Landscaping, Jim Pioppi of Pioppi Construction, and Anthony Pallone of Anthony Pallone Trucking. Sidewalk snow removal would be Mark DiTomaso of Eagle Services.
Some more.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion on these agreements? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Marotti?
Yes.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yeah.
Counselor Vecchia?
Yes.
Counselor Krasco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, motion carries. And moving on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two. Counselors form, and we'll start with Counselor Vecchia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things tonight. The town manager today sent me over some budget figures from the school department, and I sent the town manager back a memo stating, "These are summary figures, and I really want a, we really need a detailed line item budget so we can see where the schools are spending the money," Mr. Town Manager. Okay? The second thing, I read, anybody read the telegram today? The editorial in the telegram? Well, it states that, that our school system is in turmoil, and it's time that the Southbridge school system should be, what it's saying here, remains in need of state intervention. So, this is where we're at right now, and I'm getting questions about the school department, so we should get on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things. First of all, I would like to say thanks to Kevin Buckson for bringing up actually the tax issue, because I had emailed the manager and Will Knoyer about that, because I was wondering how the system was, how those, the individual figures were actually calculated. I have, I know you said that he was going to send us, send us an email, and I haven't seen it yet. Oh, I'm sorry, he said that he was, he had sent out an email, and I haven't seen it yet. Oh, and Will Knoyer had, I contacted you and Will Knoyer about the way the tax, the individual household taxes, property taxes were calculated. And I ran into Will, and he said that he had sent, he had written something up and sent it to you to send to us, and I know I haven't seen it. So, I was wondering what happened with that.
I have it right here.
Because I know, I was concerned about the fact that, I know when we got the bill personally, the 5% hike that we'd been told to expect, we got 7-plus percent. And I know, I'm assuming other people, when I talked to Will very briefly, he mentioned that it's a, it's actually a range of percentages, so I don't really know how that's calculated. I know, I would love to know, I bet a lot of other people would too, so.
Mr. Pecos has a response for you.
Let me go through the four questions, Gus, because it struck Will and I that this would be very, very beneficial for the public to hear. My apologies, because I just this moment noticed, Will sent this to me, I was supposed to forward it to you today, and I got a little, a little slammed and didn't get a chance to get to emails as well as I should have, but there's some very good detailed answers to your questions. So the first question that Gus asked is, why is the actual tax hike higher than what we were told to expect? Now, everybody remembers, we were told to expect something a little over 5%. And here's the answer from Will. The actual tax increase for any class of property is what the board stated, Board of Assessors, for the average property in that class. Now, you recall, we have residential, commercial, industrial, and open space. Those are the four classes. We use the same method to calculate this as the Massachusetts Department of Revenue in all cities and towns in the state. To calculate this average, you use the following method. You take the total value of that class and divide it by the total number of parcels in that class. This yields the average value of properties in that class. For example, the total value of all the single-family parcels in town is $431,229,500, or just shy of a half, a billion dollars. If you divide that by 2,713, which is the number of single-family parcels, you get an average value of $158,949, average value of a home. If you divide that, I'm sorry, if you then multiply this average value of a single-family home by the tax rate of $20.36 per thousand dollars, it yields an average single-family property tax bill of $3,236.21. That's the average tax bill for a single-family home for this fiscal year. If you compare that with the average single-family tax from previous fiscal year, last year, which was $3,078.02, you get an increase of $158.19, or 5.14%, which is exactly what the assessors presented.
I got that, yeah. I understood that.
So that's average.
I understood that.
Okay. It's stated, this is the methodology used by the Department of Revenue in all cities and towns in calculating average single-family tax bills for comparison. However, with 2,713 single-family parcels, some properties will go up more than average, which also means some properties will go up less than average, based on changes in real estate values in any given year. And that's determined by the home, the neighborhood, and a lot of factors that go into that. So if an individual homeowner gets a bill higher or lower than $158.19 more than last year, or 5.14% more, or less, it's because every home is gonna deviate from that average. That's what an average is. It's about over 2,700 parcels. Your second question, when do you calculate the new property values and how? The town of Southbridge is required by law to update all property values to full and fair cash value annually, based on Department of Revenue requirements. We do this following Department of Revenue requirements and use mass appraisal methods, and all of our valuations are submitted for their approval. In addition, every three years, we perform a full revaluation or recertification, which must be approved by the Department of Revenue. This ensures that every property owner is valued at full and fair cash value each year, and thus pays their fair share of the tax burden. Everything that we do is based on state law and regulations as directed by the Department of Revenue. Now, again, it's important to state that any individual home may have a higher or lower value than what the town assesses it at, based upon changes in the marketplace that can occur a day after the day we're finished. In other words, the assessors set a value of, on homes as of a certain date, and right after that date, that value can differ. Generally speaking, values go up, and so right after that, so if a homeowner sells their home, or their neighbor sells their home, and you compare the actual sale to what the assessed value is, there may well be a difference. In fact, I can almost guarantee there is. Part of that is because of the timing. We set values as of a certain date each year, June 30th.
Is that, is that the date, June 30th?
And, and you have to also remember, this is called mass appraisal. There is no practical system that allows any city or town to take those 2,713 residential parcels and individually determine the value of each individual home. That would take tremendous time. So it's done on a mass appraisal system, and naturally, there's some variation between what the assessed value is and the actual value of the piece of property sells. Okay? Next question, why aren't the property value increases included in the average tax hikes? In our presentation at the council meeting, slide number 14, shown below, gave the overall property value charges. Unfortunately, I can't show this slide. This week, I have received a small number of inquiries, less than 10, from residents in regard to their tax bills. Some went up more than the average and some less. This is normal every year, following the mailing of the tax bills, for the reasons I already stated. So any individual homeowner is not going to go up exactly 5.13%. They could go up less, they could go up a little more, and in a very, very few number of cases, there's a few homes out there that will go up exactly 5.13%, but that's pretty rare, obviously. So I hope that's helpful. I'm glad Councilor Steves asked these questions. I'm glad we were able to get this out, because I'm sure councilors are hearing these kinds of questions, perhaps from other people, and this is terrifically complex stuff, and I know I've only scratched the surface, but I would invite anyone who wants more definitive explanation to call the assessor's office, or call my office also, and I'd be more than happy to speak with people, or call Yvonne in my office, make an appointment and come on in, and we'll go through it with them in detail.
Sure, well, before you do, Councilor Steve still has the floor.
I did, because I did ask specifically, so are these calculated every year on Ja, on June 30th?
The values, the values are set every year, correct me, it may be valued as of December 31st. I'd have to check whether it's December 31st, or another date. But the value is set each year on the same date as of that date. And then the minute that value is set, of course, the very next day, so a house is assessed for a certain value. The very next day, the market will cause that actual value to go up or down. In other words, if the, if the town says your home is valued at $150,000 today, tomorrow, because of the natural increase in real estate, your house would be worth a little more. But we don't reset that value until a year later, for tax purposes. So if a homeowner comes, sells their house, a real arms-length transaction, and that, of course, sets the true value, if they sell their home, it can very well deviate from where we have it assessed, because it may, the sale may occur later. In addition, there's some variation due to the fact that we have to appraise all 3,000 parcels every year, and we have no practical way to set the value dead-on-the-button for every single property. That's called mass appraisal. So we try to get it within certain tolerances. The important thing is, everybody is valued according to those same relative variances. So it's not like one property is getting valued higher than another. That's not how it works.
He has a question.
I just wanna clarify something. One of the third quarters tax statement was sent out. The first two quarters, okay, which was the first, the last two quarters of the calendar year, they didn't include a tax increase.
Correct.
So the, these last two quarters include a double tax increase for the first two quarters that the taxes didn't go up.
Correct.
All right? So if he sees a 7% increase in his taxes, it's really 3.5, because he didn't get the 3.5 the first two quarters.
That's absolutely correct.
Does that answer your question?
Okay.
You're essentially paying your tax retroactively.
Okay. But all this stuff you're sending out is complicated and everything, but this is the simple layman explanation. Because I've been getting a tremendous amount of calls, and I could've stated this tonight, but I'll leave this to the next meeting, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I did have a couple of other quick things. First off, I wanted to also thank everyone, the people who we just appointed, and, and we've kind of brought this up a couple of times. Okay, I'm sorry. I wanted to thank the people that stepped forward, that we disappointed, to various committees, and just wanted to point out that we have a ton more vacancies on a variety of town boards. Last I looked at the town website, there were 17 boards that need people, including at least three to seven more from the master plan committee that the chairman mentioned, a couple from agricultural, a couple from planning board alternates, at least one or two people from the board of registrars. There's a whole slew of people that we need. And just to remember that being, a democratic system requires people to be involved, it's not just casting a ballot every so often. This is, this is our government, and we need people to, to run it. Also, a couple of days ago, a couple of us got together with some conservation commission people, and from the, from the DPW, and from Mass DOT, to take a look at the rail trail down behind the, down behind industrial dismantling, on that stretch going to Dudley. And so we, we were trying to look at some options for fixing the rail trail, because it's eroding really badly back there. And there's some concerns about, at this point, it hasn't gotten to the point where it's eroding away the, the trail itself, but at some point, it could. And eventually, if we don't do something about it, it could eventually, it could eventually harm private property. So at some point, we need to do something about it. The problem is, from the, the initial suggested costs are easily six figures. So if we, we got a couple of something that's, I don't know if there's somebody out there who has some good grant fund, good, good sources for grant money that can deal with these kinds of environmental projects, we'd love to hear from them, because we certainly don't have that spare cash. So anyway, and also, I was sat in on the conservation commission meeting a couple of days ago, and just wanted to point out that, that people driving down Dresser Street coming this spring, the road is gonna be closed for a while, in probably in April for a couple of weeks, because they're gonna be replacing that culvert that's right across the street, that, that runs across the street from McCam, McMahon Field. So there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some traffic diverted around there, and nobody knows exactly yet where that's gonna be going, but, so keep tabs on that. The police department will come, probably come up with that at some point. I just wanted to mention those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pellican.
Thank you. Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Councilor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I would like to, first of all, thank our new governor, Charlie Baker, for releasing the remaining Chapter 90 money that our previous governor was holding up for our communities. That was $100 million for communities in Massachusetts. That was specifically earmarked for Chapter 90 infrastructure. And Southbridge, the money released to Southbridge was $485,471 previously. There was a remaining $242,736 that was being held up just for Southbridge alone, and that has been, or will be released soon. I know Governor Baker did sign the papers. So for that fiscal year, for that money, Southbridge will receive a total of $728,207. So he stayed true to his word. He promised the communities, if he was elected governor, that would be the first thing he did, and that was the first thing he did. He signed those, that paper. So I just wanna thank, thank him for staying true to his word. And I just wanna say, I hope everybody had happy holidays, a nice vacation, whatever they did, Happy New Years, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Estrada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, people, good evening, my, my theory. My point, Mr. Pagos, is that the city is missing, missing information, for information for why, one more time, increase the taxes. I, I talk the city, I talk the people, for any more information on the why. This holiday, all day, the people in the supermarket, and street, and the call, and Mr. Estrada, why, one more time, quit the taxes? The people need more information. Today, the first, the, sorry, today, the first meeting, the 2015, I hope that I work together with a great idea for the people. I could, I, I bring a great idea this, this year. Yes, I need, everyone, Mr. Pagos, support for my idea. The people, this year, I make a difference. I need your help, I need help, the, the council, Mr. Pagos, support my idea. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Councilor Clements?
Just wanna wish everybody a happy 2015, and let's try to work together and do some really great things. I have high hopes for the community, so I hope that we have a lot of support out there in making 2015 a great year. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Karaska?
Yes, I got two things this evening. First, I wanna wish the, our community a Happy New Year. And the second thing is, through you, Mr. Chair, to our town manager, on Friday, I received a phone call from an I-8 citizen that found out some information in regards to our local DPW, snow plowing, how, I don't know who made the decision, I don't know how it happened. I don't know if it's accurate yet. I did call our council chair, and we've had very busy weekends, so we haven't even been able to kind of catch up. But it, it has come to my attention that for a two-inch snowstorm, they came in at 3:30 in the morning. How is that possible? That's, that's 12 hours of overtime. It's, for two inches of snow, 3:30 in the morning, and the snow didn't start till 7:45, so.
Let me give the, the council and the public the sort of executive overview, and then if you want a more detailed scientific, we'll go to Heather. But council chair had sent an email out, which Heather took a great deal of time to go through in great detail. We are, we are in receipt of new science with respect to how you prepare the streets, put it that way. It is no longer the case that for a small snowstorm, that we necessarily go out with plows and scrape it, particularly a couple of inches. The forecast in this case was for two to four inches. We're thought to be right in the epicenter of a belt of heavy snow, and then later in the morning, it would dissipate, and it would get warmer, and it would melt. The actuality was, it turned out to be a little longer duration. But what we're being told is that we need to do more application of salt, and there's other chemicals as well, let's just say, salt generically, to do what's called, prepare the street, so that when the snow actually falls, particularly small snowflow falls, like two or three inches, rather than have to go out and necessarily plow it, we turn it into slush, it dissipates with the wheels of people driving over it, it's not necessarily slippery. And when the warming temperatures come, we don't have to spend the money to send the plows out, because that's a bigger expense. So what you saw those employees doing at 3:30 in the morning were spreading salt and preparing the streets. Later that day, it became, later that morning, it became evident we were getting more snow than we expected. And now remember, we have all the schoolchildren that are already in school at that point, I'm talking 9:10 in the morning now, and we know the schools are gonna be letting out starting a couple of, a few hours later, and we got more snow than we anticipated. So now we've got three or four inches of snow. It has turned to slush, the chemicals did exactly what they were supposed to, but we got more, so we had to bring in the plows as well, and start moving the snow off the streets. So that's how you saw that succession of first chemical application and then plowing. Now, the theory of doing it all this way is that instead of putting a lot of sand out there, which is what we used to do, sand and salt combined, we put very little sand out now, and we save a lot of money on sand, we save a lot of money on cleaning that very same sand up come next spring. And so this new science we're getting is an interesting possibility, we hope, to save a lot of money. So that's sort of the executive overview perspective, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if Heather, the DPW director, would like to add anything more to that, or any more detail, because you just hit the, the ultimate limit of my science. That's why I do this job.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So maybe I can take a minute to try to explain what we're doing. You will see us what is called pre-treating, where we are applying salt to the roads before the storm happens. Previously, we used to come in basically at the first snowflake and start treating, and what happens in that case, the first roads that we go on actually get the same science, it gets down really well, but it takes us two and a half to three hours to, to just spread salt through the whole town. We know that. That's how long it takes to get around with our eight trucks that we use to salt, to, to get it, to cover all the streets in the town. So with that, we needed to adjust our timeframe and get the material down before it starts. So now we're looking at the time that the storms are gonna arrive, and going three hours before that. In addition, we have a three-hour minimum on overtime. So even if we called the guys in at 6 o'clock in the morning, we're paying them for three hours, no matter what. That's in their contract. So we knew, we planned ahead, we, the storm was predicted to actually hit sooner than it did. It was predicted to not be as big a storm or a snow as quickly as it did, and it made us actually have to adjust our operations a little bit. We didn't really think we were gonna have to plow this event, and, you know, come in at 10:30, when we have cars off the road in South Street, and we have reports of other people, we had to kind of switch gears and say, we have to plow. We are not gonna get the kids home, and we didn't know it was gonna turn out, you know, it was gonna become bright and sunny. But even if it was bright and sunny, we were having cars off the road, it was a safety concern. So we called in the plows and got the slush and the, the snow off the streets. Downtown, there really wasn't that much of an issue. When you got out onto South Street, when you got out onto Blackmere, when you got out onto some of the other, Eastford Road, there was a lot of snow out there. It's amazing, in different parts of this town, how much different the snowstorm can be. So that's something we have to take into consideration when we're doing it. We are still learning this process. We are going to currently keep evaluating, we're going to talk, Ronnie and I talked this morning about it. This little storm that we just had, this little ice vent, everybody said it was slippery coming in. They called, they were called in at 5:30, they were out reapplying salt, you know, it rained all day. All, any material that was down there wasn't down there anymore, because it kind of dissipated and got washed away. You didn't wanna put it out while it was raining, because it was just gonna waste the material. Kind of had to wait and see what was gonna happen. Temperatures dove, everything got glazy and icy. I can tell you that they've been out re-treating everything. But yes, still be very careful and cautious, because we aren't using the salt, the sand anymore. That is the way the science is going, on multiple levels, to save on multiple degrees. I do think if we get a major ice event, we might have to put some grit out there in different cases, so we still have that in our, to be able to do. But we're making an effort to try to change to a more efficient way of doing business, but this is part of what it is. You know, we've gone through some training to see what it is, we recalibrated all the machines to make sure, we know when we're just putting salt down, that we're putting the right rates down. We're making efforts to try to improve our operations. And I, I know there's gonna be some growing pains, so we're gonna keep reevaluating.
Again, through you, Mr. Chair, and Ms. Bakely, again, my, my only concern is, was with the crazy amount of money that we spent last year, and I don't wanna see, we haven't, knock on wood, haven't had a lot of snow. I mean, I'm not a weatherman, so, I mean, my estimation has probably been five inches of snow so far. I just don't wanna see the overtime rates. It's good to know that, we know that it's a three-hour minimum, that we're gonna pay these guys regardless. So that's something that I can reach out to that citizen and say, okay, this is, this is, this is the situation.
And it's not, so it's not 12 hours, they only get paid, they go on their straight time as soon as that, that 7 o'clock. No matter where they are in a storm, they don't stay on their double time, it's back to single time when it's the regular daytime hours.
Great. Thank you for clearing, clearing that information up. Again, my, my concern is, you know, I don't wanna be jacked up in overtime fees in regards to calling in contracts, and then in a couple months, we're gonna be voting again to appropriate another $250,000 for a year that we haven't really had much snow. So I know we're trying a new science, but at the same time, please, do as much as you can.
No, I, I hear you, and I think we, we're trying to do as much as you can with, in the parameters that, you know, as soon as we start hearing cars off the road, I'm gonna err on the side of getting the snow off the road.
No, which, which I thank you for doing that. Again, my concern being the amount, the cost. I, I mean, overtime for some of these guys is big, big, big dollars, so I just would like to see kind of a control there.
Councilor Steves?
I have a quick question for you, Heather. How much have we actually spent so far this winter?
I, I don't have up-to-date numbers to tell you how much I've spent, we've spent so far on snow. We've had to stock up on our salt, so we already have all those numbers in there too. So I could get those together, but it will be, give me a couple of days, because there's a lot of sources you gotta pull those numbers from.
Okay. Mr. Pagos?
Just, just a cautionary note. While we cannot say how much snow, sleet, ice, and all that sort of thing we're going to get in a given year, what I can tell the council is that what Heather is doing this year is very different than what we did last year. Now, so pound for pound, inch for inch, if you will, I would expect a more efficacious effect in terms of efficiency with respect to the dollars we're spending with what we're doing this year than we, than would be compared to last year. So I think you'll see a more beneficial effect, but again, nobody can predict, you know, snowfall.
Yes.
But it's a whole different methodology we're doing this year.
Which is great, and I hope it really works, and keeps our roads safe, but my concern is...
We hear you.
The money.
Yes.
Councilor Clements?
Well, just listening, and the only thing I can see different, after six years of listening, and, and watching the snow more intently because of the cost, is it's not just the snow. While we may be saving on snow removal right now, in terms of, we're not going out there cleaning parking lots, and we don't have 10-foot piles like we have over the years, if we get ice, it requires the same, manpower has to come out in salt or sand, or whatever it is we're doing, whether it's sand or salt, manpower comes out. So if we're getting all this rain, which we've been getting a lot of lately, a lot of wet issues, as soon as the temperatures drop, that may require that call-in. I like the idea of the efficiencies, I like the idea of, you know, being ahead of the, ahead of the curve, or the ice, whatever it works. Certainly, though, I'm mindful of the fact that it could be an ice year versus a snow year, and cost almost the same kind of money, depending on how many times we get this rain and ice situation, so.
This is true. I mean, we got called out again tonight, there's another three hours of time, you know?
Right. But you're using them for three hours, and that's nice.
We're using them, the, the nice thing about the minimum is it very much equates to how long it actually takes us to treat the town. So it's not like we're, it, it actually, there, there was some science behind the, what the minimum is and what the time that it takes to go out there. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, as everybody walks out tonight, please be careful. They did retreat all the surfaces while we were in here, but still, please be careful, because it is icy. I know when I walked in, it was icy, so please be careful.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 23, discussion of next meeting dates. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, discussion of next meeting dates.
Monday, January twenty-sixth at seven PM here in council chambers.
Okay, and Agenda Item Number Twenty-four is adjournment. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.